The May 5, 2022 special meeting/ budget hearing of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Please rise for the salute, the American flag, and a moment of silence.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Ms. Anderson. Oh, I got you, I'm sorry.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the sunshine law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: March 11, 2022, email to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Commerce Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, the Board of Education Administration Building, and also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the budget items presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of township in which you reside, along with a specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes, and no response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Tom Maris, Ford, New Jersey. Nice and loud tonight. Just to be clear, you only have five minutes to discuss a budget that is involving $300 and some odd million dollars?
That's correct. This is the second budget hearing that you've had, one more than is required by law.
Well, I believe the other one was April 28. Was that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I'm sorry I missed it. That was my fault. Had that been more open to the public, had they attended, anyone attending, did you give them five minutes or that as well?
Yes, the public attended.
Pardon?
Yes, the public was there.
Okay. Were they allowed to speak longer than five minutes?
If my recollection is correct, nobody ran out of time. They were able to speak about what.
The question is not whether they ran out of time, did you allot only five minutes to them?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I want to know. All right, so the budget's gone up by $24,819,746, an 8.91% increase. Can you explain why it's gone up that much?
Is that your last comment?
No, that's my only one. I'm sorry, that's right, we don't discuss, so I have to get them all in. Also, I noticed that at least what I was able to download off the website, and you did a nice job with it, but there's all types of things that you're showing are attributable, I'm assuming, to the cost increase that I just referred to, and yet there's no individual breakdowns for those costs. Can you explain why that isn't and why you don't put that up, such as instruction programs, early intervention, legacy English second, and it goes on from there? As you said, in your own packet, or as I noted, within your packet, there are the expenditures that you're looking at, but they don't break them down individually so that the public would know how much is being increased for upgrades in the schools, the referendum projects, and so on. Also, I believe the board only receives a percentage, or they get the money from tax levied to the property owners. Now, in the case of pilot programs, I believe you still get taxation off the land itself, but the improvements under the pilot program then go to the municipality. What portion of that is in your budget? And those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Dr. Massimino.
Sure. Mr. Maris, I'll let Mr. Wolfman talk about your first question, then I'll jump in.
Sure.
As far as the increases to the budget, they're based on a few factors. The increase in the tax levy, which is 2%, as is capped, the additional state aid, which we received, as well as miscellaneous revenues that we received, and the use of surplus from previous years. So those increases are how we come up with the budget total.
Mr. Maris, in regards to the breakdown, there are obviously a lot of items you saw there. It wouldn't be a very efficient presentation for the reader if they had each individual cost. Quite honestly, some of those costs still aren't determined. We're waiting for curricular materials, staffing needs. There are so many different components that are going into each individual component. To itemize each one would be exceptionally, I'd probably have to produce almost a line-item type breakdown of that. So we tried to give everybody an overview in terms of what we were doing across the district.
But you do a dance.
With regards to your third question, I'll let Mr. Wolfman tackle that.
Yeah, as far as the pilot funds that we received this year, I don't have an exact amount, but they are in the same amount as what it cost us to pay back the bonds related to the most recent referendum. So whatever we would owe for the 22, 23 school year, that is how much we receive in pilots.
So all pilot money goes to paying down the bond debt, or is it used for other things as?
The pilot money that we receive, all gets used to pay down that debt.
Again, going back to the expenditures, I understand in a budget works.
Mr. Maris, unfortunately, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps somebody else can follow up. Thank you.
My name is Adita Comorek, and I'm from Colonial, New Jersey. I would like to ask if, would I be permitted to ask questions outside of today's agenda?
Yes, you will. After we close this portion out, I'll open it up to public comment again.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments concerning the budget? Finance and insurance, Mr. Trebowser?
Sure, I just want to make one statement since that was the public aspect of it. I just want to recognize that the administration, I do think you guys did an outstanding job of putting together a budget, but most importantly, I like the fact that you guys addressed some of our infrastructure issues that unfortunately had not been addressed in the last couple of years. The pandemic gave us a very unusual circumstance to deal with as far as our learning loss for the last two years, and I don't think that's indicative of just Woodbridge Township. I think that is a national, if not an international, situation. I think the fact that you put in additional resources into early intervention and early learning is paramount to us getting our students back to where they need to be and moving them forward in the near future, hopefully. One of the things I also recognized in the budget, I don't know how much discussion really was asked about it, but the SEL and recognizing that the students, and I'm sure a lot of adults also, have suffered greatly in the isolation and some of the other circumstances that have taken place due to the pandemic, I'm glad to see that we're putting the guidance counselors in at the middle school level to really reinforce that while things are going on. And one thing last, I don't think anybody recognized, was that the administration has continued to fund reserve accounts, which is outstanding because what that does is that ensures the ability for us to maintain our infrastructure, our buildings, and our facilities throughout the district without negatively impacting the educational aspect of what a school district is for. And truly, I think that everybody in our community, I'm sure everyone on the board, and I know I'm not supposed to speak for the board, but recognizes that a school district's paramount function is to educate students and to help them to become lifelong learners and also to become value-adding people in society. So from that aspect, I just want to say I think that the administration made a lot of difficult decisions. I certainly would hate to say that I agree with everything that is done, but I certainly agree that with, under the circumstances and under what you all inherited, you have done an outstanding job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowser.
If I may. Finance and Insurance Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following one recommendation. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
A motion on Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Sure.
Good evening. I want to echo some of Mr. Trebowser's comments, compliment to the administration. There's a public health crisis, excuse me, better said, a mental health crisis going on throughout the state and throughout the country, particularly amongst our children, and I want to commend the administration for putting money in for middle school guidance counselors. I think that's where some of the greatest needs are, so an additional middle school guidance counselor at each of our five middle schools, as well as additional clinical social workers. So just a compliment to the administration on that aspect of the budget. I don't agree with every aspect of the budget, but you know, Mr. Wolfman and I answered many of my questions, along with a number of my colleagues, so we thank you for your efforts, keeping the budget trimmed, keeping the tax increase minimal. I want to keep pushing you guys to keep that tax rate as flat as possible as we continue to see increases from the state. So thank you very much. With Florida voting yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
We will now open the meeting for the public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of township in which you reside. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance to Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Okay, again, my name is Adita Comorek, and I live in Colonial, New Jersey. I have a question to Dr. Massimino, as the head of the Board of Education of Woodbridge Township. You recently responded to the parents' letter, saying that there is no substantiated threat of a substantiated public health concern, and I would like to know what basis, on what basis was this determination made? Because as far as I know, the Woodbridge, I think you cited Woodbridge Board of Health as saying that, and I've attended the council meeting two days ago, and Mr. Mayor said that because of lack of resources, Woodbridge Board of Health is not directly included in the investigation or involved in the investigation.
Is that your last question?
Oh, yes.
Are you have any other questions?
Sure. Also, we understand that the Board of Education cannot permit remote learning at this time, Woodbridge, the local Board of Education, and we would like to, and we've asked the Governor of New Jersey to have an exception or make an exception for us, and I would like to know why, in today's response to the parents, Dr. Massimino wouldn't let us meet with the state officials to further express our concerns and ask and demand for the exception of the remote learning, because they're the only authority to, you know, to be able to grant it to us.
Okay, that's.
Are you done with your questions? Because I don't want to interrupt your time.
I think so.
Sure. So I'll answer your first question. The Woodbridge Board of Health is who we defer to in terms of all things related to health within the township. They work with the county, they work with the State Department of Health. So I have been on the phone with the State Department of Health. They have given me the same response. So when I refer, I always refer to the local in terms of no discernible health threat that was given to me.
Can I intercept? Because as far as I know, there is no results back from the laboratory yet.
Correct. So we don't have any evidence given to us, and I'm not a health expert or environmental expert, which is why I defer to those experts and those state agencies.
Sure, that's why the parents would like to speak with the New Jersey DOH and other agencies, agencies such as New Jersey DEP, to find out what was the basis of this determination as soon as possible.
And you are free to do that. I think there's a misconception out there that I have purview over any state agencies or any of their representatives.
I know you don't.
The public meet does not need my approval, nor could I give it. I have no say over anything that happens with a government agency.
But I think we have a right to demand a public meeting in a situation like that. I mean, to us, it is a health crisis.
Understood.
The cases, the cases are rising, the cases count are rising pretty much every day, so we are truly concerned.
I can't mandate state officials. I don't, that's what I'm trying to make the point to. I have no purview over them. So I can control what happens within this district, within the 25 schools. I'm on the phone with them the same way any other citizen would be, so.
But my understanding is that you basically just told us that we're going to have a public meeting later on when the results are back, but you haven't, maybe you did, but I'm not aware of that. There was no attempt to request such involvement of New Jersey DEP and New Jersey DOH in, you know, in public meeting for us.
Okay, so I have the statement. I can read it for you exactly what I stated in that, if you'd like, because I think there may be some confusion in regards to.
Maybe, maybe.
The statement I sent out to those parents was as follows: Thanks for your communication. As you know, we take this issue very seriously, and we'll continue to do everything we can to engage as many entities as we can to help advise us on this issue and ensure that we are conducting all appropriate tests. The radiological testing that has concluded, and we have requested that the report be expedited for review by our consultants, along with the federal and state experts. Specifically, we are working in cooperation with the mayor's office and the New Jersey Department of Health to try and create an opportunity for a public meeting once the results are received. We will continue to keep the Colonial High School community informed of our steps along the way.
I understand that, but couldn't you, as the head of the Board of Education, at least try to request a meeting sooner, an emergency meeting for us?
Yeah, so let me just say, this is sort of a different role for the superintendent of schools. When you refer to the head of the Board of Education, ma'am, I believe you're referring to the superintendent, right, the chief school administrator. So Dr. Massimino has shifted in some ways into an advocacy role on behalf of the community in this situation. So what's happening now is the, you know, this, and I know you appreciate this, and you've been very reasonable in your analysis. I think that the concern that the board has, which is what is shared with the community, is that this stuff takes time. You know, the research on what's out there, it takes time. The tests are taking a lot longer than any of us want, and the results are taking longer. So what's happening is, as those results are coming in, I think obviously the board's administration is consulting with the township, and the township is consulting with its health department, but there's also plenty of appeals, from what I understand, going on between the Board of Education and state and federal officials right now, and trying to get as much as we possibly can to make sure that we have the foremost experts and government officials looking at this issue. This is extraordinary, obviously, this is extraordinarily concerning for everyone, and we want to get to the bottom of it, but when Dr. Massimino said there's no discernible health issue, it was, it's at this time, at this moment.
And I understand that.
That's all, that's just based on the limited results that we've had at this moment. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear.
No, I understand that completely, yes. But that's what I'm saying, if we don't have the results, how can we say for sure that there is no threat? And that's why the "at this time" information. And I completely understand that this type of investigations are taking, do take long time, because I myself am an environmental scientist, so I deal with it on a daily basis.
You know a lot more than I do about this.
And that's why I'm a little alarmed, because I know that if we take this investigation step by step, it can take months, if not years, so.
Well, that brings us to the other point that I think Dr. Massimino was trying to convey, you know, all, and I represent boards of education throughout the state, so we have the same issue with remote learning, and it's not just an issue of, you know, something as concerning as this, but it's also, you know, concerning issues like the pandemic and everything else. The Roadback, which is the analysis that the Department of Education provided boards of education throughout New Jersey, was designed for pandemic-related home instruction, or should I say, remote instruction, excuse me. And so what's happening here is, you know, and again, Dr. Massimino will jump in if I'm saying something that's not accurate, but when shifting to an advocacy role on behalf of your community, which I think in many ways has occurred here, both in the township and the Board of Education side, as we appeal to others to help us make sure we're making the right decisions and doing the right thing on behalf of the communities we search for whatever's going on, you know, I think the board is in, is in a, you know, obviously, a position of trying to almost lobby on behalf of the community and making sure that we were able to get those answers. So we don't have them yet. The state at this moment, as I understand it, will not allow the board, under the Roadback analysis, to conduct remote instruction. And so we're in this spot. If the board were to just decide to, you know, we wouldn't be able to by law to just remotely instruct the kids unless we were given permission by the Department of Education. At this moment, that hasn't happened. Go ahead, Dr. Massimino.
Can I just give one comment, if you may? So I understand that, and I appreciate all your effort to helping us, the parents and teachers and kids of Colonial High School. However, if we can, I understand we can't get the determination for remote learning right now, that's why we need to reach out to the state officials, we as parents, because I understand you exhausted all of your avenues, and we appreciate everything you've done.
I think, and by the way, I don't think the term is exhausted. I think we're going to continue to.
Okay, so that's even better.
We're right with you. We're going to continue to.
Wonderful.
And frankly, if you and other parents and other community members are involved in that, that's like Dr. Massimino said, you're right, and frankly, it helps them understand what we as a board have been asking for the last couple of weeks.
So my point is, why not have a public meeting before the results are in? I understand that we don't have anything to go by, but there are other issues that the parents would like to raise to the state officials, especially.
I don't disagree that there are other issues. I'm going to go back to my initial point. I don't have any purview. I can ask. I can ask the same way everybody else can.
Would you please?
I have.
Yeah.
I have.
Okay. Well, can you try again? Because we keep trying, and you know, maybe together we can make a difference.
I, on a daily basis, my commitment is to advocate on behalf of this community. I live in this community as well, so.
Do you have any kids in that school?
I have two, and they will be going to Colonial High School.
They will be?
Yes.
But they're not there yet.
No, but they will be. So it doesn't minimize, if I didn't have any kids, it wouldn't minimize my commitment to the community. Every day I'm advocating, whether it's calling the Department of Education to inquire about remote instruction, because I understand the parents' perspective, talking to the Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Protection. Like I said, I'm an advocate alongside of you. I will use my position to the best of my abilities to advocate, but like everybody else, I have to follow the same protocols you do.
It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Velez?
Sure.
Ms. Condra. Hi, my name is Dan. I work for the state of New Jersey. I work for Speaker Coughlin on Roway Avenue. I believe yourself and a number of other parents wrote us yesterday, so over the past couple of days, and even prior to that, through my role as a board member, we've been working with the superintendent, the mayor, the state legislature, and the Department of Health, Department of Environmental Protection, and through Dr. Massimino, the Department of Education. So we're weighing what to do next. You know, the public meeting is an ask that's before us. We're weighing that. Obviously, there's some things we need to think about, you know, whether to hold it, whether to, you know, time, date, place, location, who's there. Without test results, there's limitation on what could be said, and then of course, you know, there's the consideration of what does that event turn into, frankly? You know, there's an amount of hysteria to a certain point for some, and you don't, you want to be careful with how you handle the meeting. So we're weighing that. I'm speaking with our chief of staff today, Senator Vitali, Speaker Coughlin. We're weighing that. Don't think that your letter, which has not been yet responded to yet, has fallen on deaf ears. We're looking at it, we're talking about it every day. We'll be working with the superintendent and the mayor throughout the process and seeing how we can influence the state of New Jersey. I can tell you that Commissioner Persicelli, she's probably been made part of the most famous Department of Education commissioner in the state's history, having spent so much time on TV the past couple of years. I know she personally called the mayor a week or two ago and talked about, talked out, you know, next steps, things of that nature. So the state officials, the commissioner of education is hands-on, she called the mayor personally, you know, unsolicited. So the state is involved, and if we could ramp up our involvement, we're considering that as of this minute, for lack of a better term. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Paul Lund, Hope Lund. Few different issues. Number one, the New Jersey State Board of Education had four of its members request a little bit of a slowdown on this launching of gender identity and other social, emotional learning, I think it comes under the heading, or health comes under the heading, and the state board refused. They said it was decided two years ago, they will not revisit the curriculum around sexuality to our young ones. I know the superintendent has talked to some of the people in the community and assured them that, you know, they will have a say in what goes on. Is that still your stance, that it will be transparent, whatever they launch here come September, because it looks like it's unstoppable at this point?
I don't want to interrupt your time, sir. Is that your only question?
No.
Okay, I'll let you ask all your questions first, so I don't take up any of your time.
There is in Florida a Parental Rights in Education Act, which is very explicit about making sure parents have full knowledge of anything relating to teaching of, you know, gender identities and, you know, sexual preferences, things along those lines. I'm a big advocate that that should happen in New Jersey as well. I got to assume that there are among you some somewhat, you know, conservative, maybe even have traditional family values around that. And I just want to, again, reiterate, is there, this is tied to the first question, is there anything you're prepared to say or do if the level of teaching is influencing children, creating gender confusion, opening the door for puberty blockers by fifth grade? Are these concerns that are shared by you, because I know for sure many parents are concerned about that? And one thing I will add, the state of Texas Attorney General, and I mentioned this last time, is investigating to see if opening the door and affirming gender confusion among the young and opening the door to puberty blockers, which are supposed to be used for precocious puberty, that is, to halt or arrest an overactive endocrine system, not to be on prolonged use while the child is coached on deciding which gender they're going to go with later in life. I will also state that there is much talk about transition and affirming that in the transgender community. There's also a lot of detransitioning, and there's a lot of irreversible physiological things that happen that can't be reversed. There's also three times the suicide rate among the transgender, and I hear that this curriculum is creating confusion, opening the door for puberty blockers, cross-hormone treatment while the students are in school. And I know there's more than enough activists out there, because there is such a thing as TikTok, and there's many activist teachers who say, I don't care what the superintendent says, I don't care what the state says, I'm going to advocate for my children. And they do consider them their children. All these reasons, I want you to really give careful consideration to how you answer that question. Last question I have is around, I understand that the American Rescue Plan, which delivered billions of dollars to schools around the country, that in certain states where it was supposed to be used for ventilation purposes, to make sure that we were COVID-safe, has been diverted to things like the curriculum that you guys are about to deliver come September. I want to know if we were beneficiaries of that money, and I'd like to know where I can find out how much of that money was used to truly COVID-proof our buildings and schools.
You doing any questions, sir?
I believe I am.
Okay. In terms of the health standards, I saw the same article today. We've taken a look at them. I mean, I'll give the mic over to our Assistant Superintendent for current instruction, but I'm going to stand by what we said. We were, our goal is to always provide age and grade level appropriate instruction. That's what we've done up to this point, that's what we will continue to do. So whatever the standards are, we're going to make sure however, however we meet those standards is appropriate by age and grade, and I'll let Mr. Postorino, because I know he's worked on this at some line.
Thank you. So the standards that you're referring to, that are being referred, being revised by the Department of Education or being looked at, really, there's two standards that are out there. The New Jersey standards, if you make the comparison to our national standards, are, I would say, tame in comparison. As Dr. Massimino pointed out. As Dr. Massimino pointed out, we will certainly look to provide age-level appropriate instruction as well as transparency for the public. You are all welcome to both look at the curriculum that is presented, but I want to take, I want to point out really the discrepancies between the national and the state. New Jersey has had a lot of the same content built into that health and phys ed curriculum, and we are reviewing actively what the differences are between those.
Okay. You did say that they're reviewing it at state level. I hear the review was done two years ago, and they're not further reviewing at this point.
Right. I misspoke, and I apologize for that, as I said that.
But also, I could just, I also think that the standards in New Jersey have always been slightly more, and this isn't like, I don't mean progressive in the sense that like, you know, liberal, conservative, progressive. I mean, they've always been more progressive. So when things happen nationally, they often don't impact New Jersey as much, because New Jersey's been there. You know, New Jersey's legislature and our courts, for example, have always been at the forefront of some national issues, well before other states that you're hearing about on television. You refer to Florida, you refer to Texas. These are states that, from a progression standpoint, are behind New Jersey. And so a lot of the rules, for example, that have come out of Washington are designed and intended to try to bring some other places up to speed, and obviously, there's been some concern by residents in those places about the way things have gone, and they've called attention, frankly, to what's been happening here for years, which maybe is what your, some of your, has raised some of your concerns. So, you know, New Jersey's always been ahead of the curve, and my expectation is, based on what I've seen, is it will continue to be. But for someone perhaps with your belief system, they may not be ahead. You may see us as behind, and that's just a factor of, you know, where you stand on these things. But again, our education is not based on anything other than the state curriculum, and, you know, our best attempt as a school district, one of the largest school districts in the state of New Jersey, to do our best to implement it in the way that we can and deliver the instruction to the kids, which is what the job of the support of education is to do.
May I just...
With regard to your last question, sir, the American Rescue Plan, if you would like to send Mr. Wolfman an email, I know you were looking for some specifics.
Right.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Wolfman, but I doubt he probably has it off the top of his head. If you would like to send them an email, we're happy to respond to give you a more specific response in terms of how that money was used.
And just the one phrase I keep hearing is "age-appropriate." And what was age-appropriate, obviously, for me back in my day, or even five years ago, or even a year ago, has shifted greatly. So what you deem age-appropriate versus what a lot of parents may deem age-appropriate, obviously, there may be a discrepancy there, and that's really where the discussion is coming from.
I say age and grade appropriate, to take a more, we take a comprehensive look at it.
Age and grade appropriate, again, there's a lot of room there, isn't there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. To the chair.
I'd also, Mr. Lund, I'd also like to comment in terms of parents' rights and responsibilities. With regard to health and physical education, if there is a discrepancy, the parents do have the right to opt out of that. I would ask that they take a look at the curriculum that's provided, and I really want to emphasize our role in curriculum. I think that that clarification absolutely needs to be made. In terms of standards, we look to implement and design programs and curriculum at the local level. We are the local level. So we do review those. It is a responsibility that we take very seriously, and we put together teams of teachers, we put together, and that will be reviewed by my office as well as everyone, in terms of the curriculum and programs that go out. But as a parent, you have that right. And that will be communicated to the parents. But again, when looking at those, there's a difference between the curriculum and the standards. The standards guide the curriculum.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Maris, for New Jersey. Just want to compliment both the people that spoke before. I thought they asked some excellent questions, things that are of deep concern to the parents and taxpayers in this community. And I appreciate you giving them the extra time to respond to them. That's nice, that's refreshing, and frankly, that's the way it should be all the time, not five-minute limitations. But anyway, before I use up mine, on the curriculum, does the school post each of its curricula? Or if they're not doing it now, will they do it? And will they do it early enough so that the parents are aware of it, or have access to it, and can comment it before the next school year? That's one question. Obviously, there's a tremendous amount of concern about what's happening at the Colonial High School. Let me just say that I've done some research too, and have talked to some people that are deeply involved in it. One of the things that has to happen is that in the testing, even the CDC and guidelines call for a two-to-90-day window for the initial test, and they consider that a short test. A long test would be up to one year to check for radon. Obviously, no one in this town wants to wait that long, nor should they. But unfortunately, it does take a certain amount of time to conduct the test and then to get the results from those. In that interim, I hope the parents will realize that there's probably no immediate danger, and I think that's what you've been addressing, to the children that you are aware of, and hence your response to it, and why you would be reluctant to pull the children out of the school, either to send them to a different venue, or to go back to online learning, which could be very disruptive. So I'd only ask the parents, if they can tolerate it, and I'm a big advocate on parents' rights and students' rights, to allow you the extra time that you're requesting without too much pressure till the tests come in and you have some definitive information, and I'm sure you will take appropriate action at that time, depending on what that information is. I do have some questions about why the school did not intervene faster on this, why it became a product of the municipal, John McCormick and the McCormick administration to front-end the money, $200,000, some odd $1,000, just the T&amp;M associates, plus I think he allocated over $400,000. I don't know where the other $200,000 is going, but just T&amp;M. Why was that not contracted by the school board? And will you be reimbursing the taxpayers, back to the McCormick administration, for whatever expenditures they are advancing to check school property? With the testing itself, as far as I know, you're only doing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, radon testing. Are you doing any other type of soil sampling for any other contaminants? Obviously, there is a real concern with the quality of the air in the building, and whether the radon is actually causing it. And there is a definitive link between radon. It's also, radon is the second biggest producer of cancer in this country, only exceeded by cigarette smoking. But radon has also been linked to various types of brain cancer and other cancers. So again, I understand the concerns of the parents, but I don't think it poses an immediate, let's get the kids out of school tomorrow or they're going to be harmed, type of scenario. But I'd be much more interested in seeing if you're testing all of the schools for radon, not just this school, I mean Colonial, but also, are you doing soil samples at Colonial? Thank you.
So I'll do my best to, what I have written down here, sir. Do we post the curriculum? I can't speak to what was posted in the past. I took over superintendent last July. So obviously, the goal is to try to get as much information out there as possible. We're a K-12 school district, we're a very big district, and there's hundreds of curricula out there. So I would be allowed to tell you, yes, I could scan them all in and have them up tomorrow, but the idea, as we move forward, and again, I'll turn this over to Mr. Posturino, because this is what, you know, his function is, the goal is to obviously make progress in that area. Mr. Posturino.
In terms of posting curriculum in public, always has the availability and access to request that information. The process currently in place that we have followed in the school district is that when that request is made to my office or to a school, the school would then provide the curriculum and the materials for the person to review. The reason that there's a difference, I'm going to go back to the standards in the curriculum, is because our curriculum guides traditionally have contained copyrighted information. And I know that's something that is being debated, I believe, in the legal system right now. But traditionally, our curriculum guides would contain that copyrighted information, which is why we've asked that they come in to review it. So when the curriculums are made available, that really becomes the question and the position of the school district to share those materials and resources. We can share you the list, we can let you look at them, we can let you review them. But in terms of copyrighting, I can't photocopy those and reproduce them. So if it's copyrighted, that's why we've traditionally had parents come into the school district, so that you can look at it, and essentially that it doesn't leave our office or it doesn't leave the school. If you certainly ask any questions regarding it, I'd be happy to have a discussion with it, as most of our building administrators would. I know I've done that in the past at schools that I've been at, when parents have been asked to review curriculum. In terms of posting it, that becomes obviously an objective of the school district. That's something that, I took over this role in November. And in terms of what we make available, what we currently have is what I would consider to be a hybrid of both technological and copyrighted curriculum. And I think one of the goals of the, of my office in the future will be really to separate those so that it can be made available.
And I just want to jump in on something that, because we've had these discussions over the last year or so, with you gentlemen in particular, and I appreciate you guys' efforts to come to meetings, and I can see your concerns, either directly or through the questions that you ask. But just remember that New Jersey is very different than other states, not just for the reasons I said before, but New Jersey is pretty remarkable in that we have all this home rule stuff, right? You have over 600 school districts, but as much, in as much, and I've said this to you before, so I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but in as much as there's home rule in this state, and as much as we have over 600 school districts throughout, everyone is required, for the most part, to deliver the exact same instruction to their kids. And this district will deliver nothing less, nor anything more than what is required by the state to deliver to the kids. And that goes for, whether it be sex education, whether that go to physical education, whether that be mathematics, whatever it is, there's a state curriculum, just like there's a number of other standards, as we were talking about masks, for example, at the time during COVID, and we had other discussions in the past. But we have to follow what the state curriculum is. And so while we appreciate what you're saying, just understand, this is a statewide issue. This is not a Woodbridge issue.
Well, it is a Woodbridge issue to the people that live here and have their kids in the school, so I would differ with you on that.
But there's nothing the board can do, other than deliver the state-directed curriculum.
As a minimum, but you could also exceed it. You said you wouldn't exceed it. You said nothing more or less. You can exceed it if it behooves the people in this town, or they request you to go above and beyond what the state is mandating. At least I would hope that you would do that in any curriculum, because the idea is to put out the best suit. And so the state may not be the best, and yet, in your judgment, or the judgment, more importantly, of the community, is we want that standard raised even higher, you should be able to accommodate, if you're so asked. I'm sorry, the rest of the...
So when this information came to me from Mayor McCormick about Colonial High School, we immediately talked about how we could jump into action. The mayor and I, I have no problem paying for anything, I don't, I think I can speak on behalf of the board. We wanted nothing but to get people in there to start testing immediately, and I do think we acted as swiftly as possible. The mayor has a bigger organization than I do. I'm a school district. He has a board of health, he has a Department of Public Works, things of that nature. They had the environmental company that they had worked with, who was able to bring in a national expert in radiological testing. So it was a natural fit to say, okay, if the mayor should want to sit down with me and say, we need to talk finance, I'm happy to do so. There is, I don't think we can put a price tag on exploring this and figuring out if there is something wrong, and if there is something wrong, how we address it. So in terms of that, I, like I said, have no problem getting behind anything we need to do.
I hope you didn't misconstrue that, I was saying, put a price tag on anything. I'm just saying, who picks up the cost? Obviously, if we had to spend millions to get this rectified, that's what we spend. So I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about who bears the cost. This is totally different budgets.
Yes, we had that discussion. The mayor said he would take the lead on it. I said, okay. I just wanted what was ever going to happen most expediently at that point. In terms of why we did the radiological testing, we received those recommendations from the Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Protection. We wanted them to vet what our plan was with our consultants. We obviously didn't want to go in the wrong direction if they had other advice, so we made sure we conferred with them and ran our plan by them, went by their recommendations, and this was the initial plan of testing that was recommended, so that's what we're doing.
So that's it, just for the radon and nothing else?
Those were the recommended initial tests, sir.
I understand.
Yes.
And what about the other schools? Are you looking at the possibility of testing them as well?
Right now, we're addressing Colonial High School.
Would you consider doing so in the future? Because we've had problems, and you well know this, with mold. We had number 24, that was a disaster. We had the roofs not too many years ago that all had to be replaced, partly because of the mold condition in those. So those are big factors, too, that I think every parent needs to be concerned about, every taxpayer in this town. And I just leave it at that.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Any other comments for the board? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Philist?
Sure.
I just wanted to just address that real quick. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, we spoke today, President Philist, we're going to have a meeting next week, and we'll take some of the different things that we've heard tonight, including testing up at that meeting. So just want to make that clear to everybody, that we're remaining proactive in addition to our partners at the municipality. And you know what? While I'm on the municipality, the, Dr. Massimino and Mayor McCormick work hand-in-hand every single day. I hear multiple times a day you guys are speaking. Their council meeting was on April 5th. They approved it, and by April 9, they were doing the testing. Our meeting was not until Wednesday, 13th. So the township had, frankly, a weak set start. They took the lead. We are all the same taxpayer. Whether we pay them back, it's really all coming from the same pocket, and that's your pocket. And we're always respectful of that, and, you know, together we acted swiftly, and, you know, that's that. And let's hope we get those results back, and hopefully, they are favorable to what we're looking for, right? And, you know, this community can, you know, move on or identify whatever the issue is that's going on. So, you know, thank you for your efforts, Dr. Massimino.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So motion.
Motion by Mr. Trebos.